Mayor, council members? So, let's pray. Father, I give you all glory and all thanks for this opportunity for all of us to gather here today. And I pray, Lord, that as the citizens of this community gather together to voice our thoughts, our concerns, to encourage our leaders to hold each other accountable. I pray, Lord, that you would give us a spirit of peace and community here. That every single one of us would recognize that we are each other's neighbors. That you have called us to love our neighbors as ourselves. And that we would do just that even here as we gather. That if we pray for our mayor, for the council members, for the staff, for every person here, Lord, that you would let us look at each other with this image of Christ, with this humanity, that you would cause us to discuss in a manner that shows grace and love, Father. And that you would allow our leadership here, Father, to cast an image for our community that glorifies you and that brings us, Father, into peace and prosperity. We pray this in the name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
Call the meeting order at six o'clock. Chief Raina, why don't we begin plugging?
... United States of America and through the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a living justice for all.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Pagonia, Jones, Lewis, Yannis?
Here, we have a quorum. Move on to item four, consideration of the approval of the agenda. Have a motion, Councilmember Jones?
I move.
Councilmember Lambert?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Move on to item five, presentations. All right, want to come up here? Knew I was gonna call on you. All right. Certificate of recognition, Jaleen DeMello, Administrative Coordinator, Public Works Department, in recognition of your outstanding performance and dedicated service to the city of Los Manos for being named Employee of the Month for July 2024. Congratulations. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? As a work director, can I make a couple comments?
Absolutely.
Jaleen's kind of like the mainstay in the department. We rely on her for a lot of guidance and she kind of helps keep me straight and squared away. So I really appreciate the work and it's a well-deserved recognition. Thank you, Jaleen.
All right, this next one, I know he's not here because he told me he's not here. Proclamation, recognizing the retirement of City of Los Manos Police Officer Todd Priccolo. Whereas Todd Priccolo was hired as a police officer by the City of Los Manos on November 27, 2000, whereas Todd Priccolo has contributed tremendously through his career to the community of Los Manos with his knowledge and commitment to his job. Whereas Todd Priccolo retired from the City of Los Manos as a police officer on August 1st, 2024, with 23 years of service as a city employee. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the City of Los Manos do hereby commend Todd Priccolo on his dedication and loyalty to the City of Los Manos and congratulate him on his retirement. Be it further proclaimed that this proclamation was presented Todd Priccolo in the city council meeting today, August 7th, 2024. So, and Todd is enjoying his first week of retirement in Las Vegas. And that's why he's not here. So I wish Todd well. And a proclamation recognizing August 4th to the 10th, 2024, as National Health Center Week. Come on up. All right, you're the chief of communications? Okay, well, I'll do my best to communicate right now. So. Whereas for over 50 years, community health centers like Golden Valley Health Centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive, primary and preventative healthcare in our nation's medically underserved communities, delivered value to and significantly impacted America's healthcare system. Whereas as the country's largest primary care network, community health centers are the healthcare home for over 31.5 million Americans in over 15,000 communities across the country and serve as a beacon for America's most vulnerable and underserved populations. Community health centers are a critical element of the health system, serving both rural and urban populations and often providing the only accessible and dependable source of primary care to their communities. Whereas every day, community health centers develop new approaches to integrate a wide range of services, primary care, including oral health, vision, behavioral health, pharmacy, and specialty services, allowing each community member to thrive. Whereas community health centers have doubled their behavioral health workforce in the last decade, community health centers are a positive economic driver, reducing costs of care and helping manage patients' chronic conditions and keeping them out of expensive healthcare settings like a hospital emergency room. Whereas community health centers support more than 500,000 direct and indirect employees who work as part of a multidisciplinary clinic team, clinical team, which is designed to treat the whole patient. Community health centers are on the front lines of emerging healthcare crisis, providing access to care for our nation's veterans, addressing the opioid epidemic, and responding to public health threats in the wake of natural disasters. Whereas National Health Center Week offers the opportunity to celebrate America's more than 1,400 community health center organizations with over 15,000 service delivery sites, including over 3,600 schools. We honor their dedicated staff, board members, patients, and all those responsible for continued success and growth while celebrating the legacy of America's community health centers and their vital role in shaping the past, present, and future of American healthcare system. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council of the City of Los Manos do hereby proclaim August 4th to the 10th, 2024, as National Health Center Week. And we encourage all Americans to participate in this week by celebrating the vital partnership between America's community health centers and the communities they serve. Thank you. Absolutely. Few words?
Well, I'm Amy and I have Cynthia with me, our Director of Operations for this region, and Marisol, the clinic manager of our clinics here in Los Manos. Golden Valley Health Centers has been serving our community for 52 years and we're really proud of the work we do. We're really proud of the fact that we get to provide high-quality healthcare for all. And that really does mean everybody who walks into our clinics has access to high-quality hair and high-quality healthcare and they're treated with dignity and respect. And so we're just happy to be here celebrating National Health Centers Week this week. We're proud to be part of Los Manos community. We love this community and we really are thankful for our patients. We actually recently remodeled both of our dental clinics and our medical clinics in Los Manos. If you haven't seen them, you should definitely pop in and see them. But yeah, Golden Valley Health Center serves about 145,000 patients a year throughout the Central Valley. And we're going to be here for the long haul. So thank you so much for recognizing National Health Center Week, for giving us the opportunity to celebrate with you this evening. And thank you. Did you want to sing?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, move on to item six, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted in the back of the city council chambers information table. And just a reminder to either turn off or silence your thoughts.
Hello, my name is Amy Bonias. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. I want to bring to your attention an important development in the city of Fresno. Starting September 15th, it will be a misdemeanor crime for individuals to sit, lie, sleep, or camp in public places. This amendment to the city ordinance comes as a response to the Supreme Court decision and the governor's executive order aimed at addressing the situation of the unhoused in that area. As an advocate for the unhoused, I am deeply concerned about the implications of such laws. Our public spaces should be inclusive and supportive, not punitive. I worry about similar measures. I worry that, I'm sorry, I worry about what similar measures might be enacted in our own city regarding how we share our public spaces, particularly for those who have nowhere else to go. At our last council meeting, I inquired about the city's plans for addressing the needs of the unhoused. I appreciated that one council member mentioned the funds that have been granted, although not yet received. Also, I recently read an article in the Los Manos Enterprise highlighting the mayor's account of our city's proactive measures, including the $11.8 million grant and the strategic planning that has taken place. I commend the efforts surrounding the Bridge Homes and I want to express my sincere admiration for Christie and Jennifer, truly remarkable individuals dedicated to supporting our community. However, one issue remains unaddressed. What will happen to the unhoused individuals in our community in the interim period before the tiny homes are available? Will Los Manos adopt stringent regulations similar to those in Fresno? Or will we take a more compassionate approach, allowing the unhoused to occupy public spaces until more permanent solutions are available? I urge the council to consider the humanity of those affected and to prioritize inclusive and humane policies. Each of us has a role to play in fostering a community that cares for all its members. Thank you for your time and I look forward to your response.
She started it, so I'm going to finish it hopefully. Okay, my name's Jacqueline Lawrence. I live at 232 West J Street, Pacheco Place, apartment three. Okay, it takes a homeless person to know what a homeless person needs. Okay, number one, you got the asphalt black. That's sunburn. That's going to happen. When my kids were at LV, Los Manos Elementary, they turned it black. My kids got sunburn bad. Number two, there's no trees there. So if you can get trees on the city streets in a bucket or whatever it is, you can do the same for the homeless. I was homeless for a month and a half in this town, other than on the side of my mother's house. Was the code enforcer after the bedbugs came in our town because of the gardener was cleaning up your homeless outreach. He left the mattresses for four days up in the air and the whole neighborhood had to get all new furniture and everything, including my mom. So what needs to be done, and some of the people said last night, is why isn't there homeless program that is a building instead? I personally can't be in the building because I have lupus and it was shut down in Merced at least eight times for the COVID. And I can't, I couldn't be in there. So they put me in a bridge house. Then I collapsed over there at Western Dental and ended up in Pacheco Place after I went into respite. And I know my sister really did do a good job because she works at the hospital and pushed Misty Mendonza. My parents, my foster parents were in the homeless outreach all of their lives. I've been with the homeless for 31 years outreach, feeding them in the D Street Park next to my mother's house, which they tried to stop me with the DA and Mr. Bellotta and a sheriff that couldn't do it because I was homeless. God gave me a barbecue pit and I rolled it in there every day when I could, when I wasn't working and helping Lane Corey and my mom at the sewing class, which I'd like to have it open again. So being homeless is because I was divorced and my ex-husband wouldn't pay me. And then it was health problems. And people here, I'm not trying to do any one church, but some people were raped in this place here. And they are not being helped. Several of them owe child support. They can't afford the child support and housing. Some of them are mental when challenged and they're using drugs otherwise. And because I ran classes at mental health, I saw it all the time for three years until I had my stroke and could not talk. Then the last time I was raped in my own home, two blocks from the police station, and I lost my home again. So if you listen to the homeless and you listen to the reason why they're homeless in the first place and have a heart, then you will know why they're homeless and please help them. And some people also like me were raped as a child and left home at 16 because I got tired of it. So I've been homeless several times, Walmart parking lot, Taco Bell, side of my mom's house, in the front of my mom's house, which they were going to give my mom a $1,000 ticket, the code enforcer, which is ridiculous because my name is on that house. I built that house for my mom with love. And that's what I want with the homeless outreach for the tiny houses, to build those homes with love. And the homeless will do it for you.
Mayor, council members, city employees. I'm pretty much reiterating what was said on the paper this past week, just an extended version. So I'm here to express my concerns regarding the selective promotion of a certain new business in our town, which is located in a historical theater building. While it is important to support the growth and development of our local businesses, it is equally crucial that we do so in a fair and unbiased manner. As residents and taxpayers, we rely on the responsible allocation of our hard-earned money by our city hall. The allocation of taxpayer dollars should be carried out with the utmost fairness and equality, ensuring that all businesses have an equal opportunity to thrive and succeed. However, it has come to my attention that certain new businesses receive preferential treatment in terms of promotion and support, while others are left struggling to gain the same level of visibility and recognition. Historical theater buildings undoubtedly hold a special place in our community with their rich cultural heritage and architectural significance. It is only natural that the restoration and utilization of such buildings should be encouraged. However, this should not come at the expense of neglecting other businesses in town that are equally deserving of support and recognition. To foster a thriving local economy, it is imperative that all businesses, regardless of their location and historical significance, are provided with equal opportunities to showcase their products and services. This not only ensures fairness, but also promotes healthy competition, innovation, and growth within our community. I urge our city hall to review their policies and practices in promoting new businesses. It is essential that allocation of resources and promotional efforts are carried out in transparent and unbiased manner. By doing so, we can create an environment where all businesses can flourish, contributing to the economical well-being of our town. In conclusion, I strongly believe that the promotion of new businesses should be based on fair and equal opportunities for all rather than favoritism towards certain establishments. Let us work together and ensure that our taxpayer dollars are spent wisely and impartially, supporting the growth and success of our businesses, of all businesses in our community. So I wrote this pretty much because, I mean, I've been a business owner here for about to be five years, December. And then another business earlier this year. I never once got invited to be part of the Chamber of Commerce. And I feel like I was neglected. But then to see this other new business has been getting promotion off the back, it's made me feel like, what about my business? What about other businesses that also deserve recognition because we build this community, we make it to be what it is? So I just, yeah, I feel like if where the taxpayer dollars are being spent on social media to promote certain things, I feel like it should be fair towards all businesses. What Imagineway Moore is doing, I feel like is a great thing. I think it's definitely showcasing a lot of beautiful things about our town and what is happening. But at the same time, I feel that it should be, I feel like it's being put on a leash. I feel like definitely there's a lot more that could be presented and shown than it's only being limited to. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I appreciate the return calls and the feedback. I know that I talk about the same concerns month after month, but unfortunately, this is the dynamic that we are in. You are my only source for answers and for change, and I will continue to voice my concerns as a representative for my neighborhood. I wanted to talk about the rail trail at some point when the homeless are no longer there. It has been, it's been there for at least 20 years when they started to put the trees out. Trees finally grew to the point where they created a really nice shade canopy. They created a screen for the businesses behind. And we hadn't got to the asphalt yet, but I was really hopeful at some point that we would. Unfortunately, now the trees had to be cut back so severely to allow emergency vehicles down a walking path that there is no longer shade on that whole walking path. It's in the sun all the time. And you can see the businesses behind the trees now. And a lot of them are gone. I mean, there's a number of trees that are gone. And the fence all the way down on that whole water basin is just cut everywhere. There's garbage in the basin. It's damage that is probably irreparable. There's, I'm sure it's not going to be fixed. Those trees are not going to be torn out and be replanted. So it is a shame that that will be a consequence long after the homeless are gone. The other thing I'd like to talk about, Shaughnessy Village Park and Deans Way Mercy Springs. What I'd really like to direct my statements and questions is towards Mr. Hot Settler. The park has been in this condition it's been in for three years. Not until when the city was ready to start work did all of a sudden he jump up and say that it was not paid for. For Mr. Hot Settler to blame the city and act like he has no responsibility to fix the issue is not acceptable. To leave the homeowners in this situation and have no regard for their anger and their money that they paid for this park, it's deplorable as a home builder. You could donate the land, which I do understand that is one thing he has to do is dedicate the land in order for it to be bought back so that you guys can build the park. He could dedicate it free and clear and name it after somebody, you know, that he loves. And he certainly donated a lot of turkeys. I don't think that land would be any more than the number of turkeys he's donated. I mean, is his reputation really worth $100,000 in a city that he has been building homes in for 40 years? He stands up here and berates the council for not maintaining landscape in his developments, but he leaves this eyesore. My guess is he's holding out for something that he wants the city to do. One way or another, it will be resolved. It would be nice that it's resolved with his help instead of his resistance. The other thing is the Deans Way intersection. It would be nice if he did step up to the plate and do his part to complete the development. It was in the development and unfortunately, because the permit was signed off, it leaves a lot of gray in who is responsible for that. But every time I drive down Mercy Springs and I look at that horrible wall and there's not a sidewalk and the high school is across the way and they have to walk down the dirt, I've walked down the dirt with my dog. It's an eyesore. I mean, it makes us look like a third world country. And it's not the way that we should look. I go down Ortacalita and I see what beautiful landscaping there is on the Anderson Homes and nice sidewalks. And I really wish we could have done the same thing or will at some point would be really nice. I hope the city learns by these horrible things that are happening and use these lessons in the next planning on what we're not going to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, city staff, fellow residents, good evening. I want to talk about a few things. First of all, I want to make an announcement that this Saturday, August 10th, from noon to 3:00, there's a small group of individuals who are taking the initiative. to three, there's a small group of individuals who are taking initiative and having an anti-harassment rally and a fight for peace at Pacheco Park. They want to raise awareness about harassment of all kinds. They particularly have commented about cyberbullying, so they want to use the park as a platform. So again, noon to three, August 10th, Pacheco Park. Second item is, there's a wonderful program here in town called Helping One Woman. It's a program where locals, just every day, volunteers, people with good heart that want to help one woman. One woman is selected. She suffered an irreparable loss. They contribute funds, they have a ticket sales, and everything that they receive goes directly to the awardee. There's no administrative costs, et cetera. So it's a wonderful program. If you can participate, it's a national program, and there's a chapter here in Los Binos as well as in Berse. Second item, well, second comments is that public participation in decision-making process is a must. It's a foundation of our republic and what this country is founded on. Unfortunately, this council has decided a different course by virtually eliminating public participation, especially in new agenda items, new spending. As you can see, most items are on the consent agenda, which virtually eliminates any public participation in the decision-making process. The only voice that we have is from one council member, Council Member Lewis, who uses her position rightfully so to advocate and provide information for the residents. Second item is, I'd like to thank the Parks and Recreation and also the Police Department for a wonderful program yesterday. Great turnout. It was still a little warm, but it was right timing. So I want to thank also the city manager for his role in doing that. I also want to thank the Parks and Recreation Department for being consistent, being consistent in the development and beautification of our park system. If we go to the city council meeting dated October 7, 2020, I believe that is when most of this initiated under Measure H and also under the statewide park development and community revitalization program, the SPP. Under this program or these initiatives, there was supposed to be a splash pad with a large playground area, installation of a veteran's memorial wall, construction and replacement of recreation hall facility, turf, trees, shade lighting, and parking upgrades. Also with this were the replacement of playground facilities. So I want to thank Mr. Hyam for continuing in that program. And again, all this can be seen at the city council meeting dated October 7, 2020. But again, dealing with the homeless, we still haven't had any public participation or any public comment period where the public can participate in decision-making process as all that program and those monies are going to be administered. There was one meeting, but it was held in a private, members-only club. That is not public community outreach. Now regarding the walkway and path to the said college, currently, we still have folks walking along the side of the highway, which is very unsafe. The...
Thirty seconds.
All right, thank you. So I'd like to have that thing returned and acted on. And also the traffic home measure on 165. There are two proposals. One is a roundabout and one is a traffic light. I believe most residents would prefer a traffic light, so I will ask you to please consider the will of the voters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, and members of the audience. I'd like to first apologize, Mayor, for my statements in the last council meeting about the engagement of drinking alcohol at a paid city conference. You were not one of those individuals engaged in such activity. That was my mistake, and I apologize for that. On June 18, 2024, the city was provided a Public Records Act request, requesting records including written communication, texts, and emails between the city, mayor, staff, council members. The PRA later on June 28 requested by Los Banos responding for additional time to gather records and anticipated delivering those records on or before July 15. On July 15, 2024, the city of Los Banos responded again, although the deadline had passed. They instructed they would deliver the PRA records request on or before July 24, 24. Yet, on July 24, the city of Los Banos responded to the Public Records Act request, Public Records Act request, and provided a link to the document request, but to emails only. No other written documentation was provided as requested, and within the 266 pages of communication provided, such only included emails that were less than a dozen emails shared between city manager, the mayor, and other council members combined. Requested texts and other written communications were not included and/or provided. This should be concerning to the public and our community, and it appears directly that there are excessive records missing and/or have been directed excluded and is an extreme lack of transparency. I'm finished for the night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Blanche George, and I wanted to give you an update on our latest transfer of spay neutering dogs, working together again with the city with individuals too vast to name, but I'd like to thank you. It also comes from the top. That, when we do that, and the last time after the last council meeting we did, I believe it was like forty-eight dogs, and again, a few cats did some hitch, some jumped in on the van and we took some for the shelter. But also, we continue to work together as a team for feral cats in our city. I'm not sure if everyone is aware, but what happens is that there are trappers and residents that need help trapping, and the friends of the Los Banos animals continues to do trapping. There are some transporters like myself that transports three to five cats back over. And again, you know, we work with the animal shelter and help out, and they help us out tremendously by using their space, just like Joe allows us with the microchipping, the Parks and Recs. But, so what happens is when we take some over, we bring some back. And this happens not on a daily basis, but almost on a daily basis. So as this increases, I'd like to make something a little light about it. So I'm going to put on my cat ears, represent the cats. And basically, what we do do, and it's funny, I want to be really light about this, so it's okay to laugh. So what we do do is when the cat is under, when it is getting ready for surgery, we actually notch the ear. So for yourselves and for the community, when you see a cat and the ear happens to be notched, that means that it's already had its shots, it's been taken care of, it has been spayed and neutered, so you could just leave that cat be because somebody is loving them in a distance in the neighborhood or at a business. So just look for that notch. Thank you, all of you guys, for your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, I'm Pastor Raul at the Mercy Springs Church, and I want to remind everybody that we are still open for the cooling center and will continue through August every day. I've been really encouraged by those who've been coming in and the participation in that. So we're still doing that, and if anybody knows anybody who needs a place to go to get out of this ridiculous heat, feel free to come, use up our air conditioning over at the church. I want to talk about something else a little bit as well. Like everybody else, I think it's important to buy local, to stay as local as we can in everything that we do, and there's all kinds of great reasons for it. We have small business owners who put food on their table through local purchases. And running a business, I remember running a business in New Mexico, and I'm a small business owner here, it's hard work. It's, you put everything into it, you work long hours, and you never know what's going to happen. So you depend on your clients, you depend on people coming to you. So there's all kinds of wonderful reasons to buy local. But as a pastor, I want to share another reason that maybe we don't think so much about, and that is the ethical implications. And I'm as guilty as anybody else. I have a daughter who is addicted to sheen, and I am sure that the products that come with all the Chinese labels on them are probably not produced in any place that provides quality pay towards people. And for those reasons, because our economics, the way that we consume products becomes something of just a way that we live our life, like taking a breath, and we don't put a lot of thought into it. For that reason, it's easy to get caught up and entangled in the act of participating to unethical commerce in our world. And it's difficult. I remember doing a project when I first started my master's degree in trying to figure out and untangling the ethics of commerce, and it's just ridiculous. No matter how close you get, it seems like it's impossible. And we live in muddy waters. That's just the reality. We live in the gray, and we all know that. But there are some things that we can do that really do make a difference, and one of the simplest things actually is just buying local. The more local you purchase something, the quicker it gets from the ground to your table, so to speak, the more likely that you're actually contributing to a fair market and to fair pay and to helping people and preventing the exploitation of people across the world. And even here, we all know that it happens in our backyards, but we can still prevent it by simply participating in local purchases and supporting each other and local businesses. And so I encourage the city as well. I know we take preference for local vendors, for local contractors, as we should, and I also recognize that we have to weigh that, that we can't just say, well, it's local, so it doesn't matter what you charge, that we have to say, hey, here's the line, this is as far as we can go to offer this privilege, if you will, this priority. But I want to encourage us to continue to do that and to speak to our local businesses about our prices. One of which that kind of gets me, and maybe there's just something I'm missing here, is the understanding why it is that we pay so much for fuel here in Los Banos. Now, to be fair, I come from New Mexico, and I freaked out when gas went over two dollars a gallon. Here, if gas was two dollars a gallon, we'd have people lined up around the block, and we'd be, well, the poor chief would be down there fighting off riots and everything else. But it seems like right here in our community, all of our gas stations, our local gas stations, are bringing prices to a level that don't seem to be necessary. Now, I get that they can do what they want. It's a private business, and we live in a capitalistic nation. People can do what they want, charge what they want, and then let the consumer decide if they're going to pay for it or not. But they have us in a bind. We're stuck here, and we have to pay what we have to pay. And so I don't know if there's something going on, if there's something that I'm missing, but here's what I would ask of the council, what I would ask of our city. Would you please reach out to our local gas station owners and ask them? I recognize, I realize that they don't have to do any of this, but ask them, encourage them, say, hey, can you guys come forward and explain to the public why it is that you are charging your neighbors so much more for these prices than they are outside of this community? Why it is that I have to fill up interlock rather than giving my tax money here in our community? And every time I do it, I feel a little sick, but hey, I got to feed my babies at the end of the day. So I have to do what I have to do. So I ask you to please reach out to them, to encourage them, to report to, to maybe to the council, say, here's what's going on. Maybe there's a justifiable reason, and just let us know what's happening and what we can do to help fix these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public forum. Move on to Item 7, consideration of the approval of the agenda. Have a motion. I'm sorry, consent agenda.
Items on the consent agenda are as follow: warrant numbers 2462382 through 246583 in the amount of $4,272,170.82. City Council meeting minutes for July 17, 2024. City Council Resolution Number 6814, approving the acceptance of a $50,000 grant PT 25050 from the California Office of Traffic Safety and amending the 2024-25 fiscal year budget by increasing the appropriation amount of the state grant fund account for expenditures and revenues in the amount of $50,000. City Council Resolution Number 6815, amending the 2024-25 fiscal year budget and approving the increase of expenditures in the amount of $44,447.47 in revenues in the amount of $39,447.47 related to the replacement of a totaled code enforcement vehicle to be reimbursed by Sedwich Insurance Fund. City Council Resolution Number 6816, authorizing the city manager to file a regional surface transportation program exchange program fund claim form for fiscal year 2324 in the amount of $652,250. City Council Resolution Number 6817, authorizing the city manager to execute the Second Amendment to the professional services agreement with Corolo Engineers, Inc. for the storm drain system master plan update in the amount of $57,883. City Council Resolution Number 6818, approving a tentative agreement memorandum of understanding by and between the City of Los Banos and the Los Banos Police Dispatchers Community Services Officers Association from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027. City Council Resolution Number 6819, amending Division 4 salary schedule employee classifications of the city's policy and procedures manual relating to changes to Section G, Police Associated with the LBD/CSOA, tentative agreements memorandums of understanding. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
All right, thank you. Any members of the council wishing to discuss or pull an item for consideration? Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to pull Item 7A, 7D, as in David, and 7F and D and F. I'd like a separate vote.
D and F, separate vote?
Yeah, D and F. Thank you.
Any other items from council? All right, seeing none, let's start with 7A.
Thank you. On page 14, the last item at the bottom of the page, check number 246472, written on July the 26, 2024, acronyms CSJVRMA in the amount of $1,150,873. I'd like to know what that check was for.
Thank you. Yes, that is our general liability payment. It pays, it covers for the workers' comp, it covers liability, auto, property, and crime insurance. This is our annual due to the Risk Management Association. This is our annual due to the Risk Management Association that we have to pay in the pool.
It's an insurance payment?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, and item D, in reading this project, it looks like we had an insurance payment for a car that was totaled from an incident. And, well, the cost of the replacement for the vehicle is $44,477.47 and I assume the $39,447.47 is the insurance replacement amount. I guess what I'm asking for explanation for is why do we have two separate accounts? It looks like the money is going for the insurance repayment into one account, and the purchase of the new vehicle is coming out of a different account.
Are you referring to the 750 and the 040?
Thank you, yes.
Yes, ma'am. So the 040 is the revenue account. So as you know, when we take in money, it has to go into a revenue account, and then expenditures comes out of a separate account.
So it's a revenue account for the police department?
Correct.
Okay, all right. I wasn't able to determine that because we don't have the final budget back that was approved. So I didn't know why money was going into one account and money was taken out of a different account. So now I understand. And that was my question on that. Okay, and then on F, let's see, that was D.
Yes, thank you, Chief.
So on item F, this is the Public Works Department. There's a second requested expenditure from the initial contract that we approved back on May 17, 2023 for Correo Engineer regarding our storm drain master plan. And I'm reading in the report that the city is required to install storm drain meters, and the last meters that were installed were over 20 years old. And I'm just kind of concerned as to whether or not we were aware of that when we approved this last year. And I realize you weren't here at that time. But I'm wondering if an assessment for these items that are being requested were evaluated during that time to include it in the budget?
The, yes, ma'am, the, the budget did allocate dollars for storm drain meters, but there are agreements with the irrigation districts that provide meters, and they've never been installed. So that's, we're looking to install the meters for the first time as our obligation under the contract. Corolla is doing the storm drain master plan. This work is a direct relation to what they're doing. They gave us a competitive decent price, and we want to meet our obligation to the irrigation districts.
Okay, so we never had the meters at all? And was it in, was in the plan from 2023 when it was approved that we needed to have these meters?
We've never had the meters. It was not in the storm drain master plan. It was a separate project. You know, 20 years ago, it should have been initiated. The city's gotten around to it. I got here, there was, it was a project underway, and I got Corolla to give me a competitive price to complete the design, and then we'll install it. But it was not part of the storm drain master plan.
Okay, I understand that now that they were never installed. But in May of '23, when we first hired this company, was there a decision in talking with CCID and the other water district that these meters needed to be installed? Or was it discussed at the time we approved it in May of '23?
It was assigned to another engineering firm that was engaged in preparing a design. And there, they moved slow, and their price was extremely high.
So then I'm understanding that we were not aware in May of '23?
Well, we were aware of it, but we had another firm doing it, a separate contract, and it was not, it was not performing. So this is, this is a step to correct that and get that, get the project moving. The reason why we selected Corolla is that they're doing the master plan is direct relation to the work.
So who's the secondary company?
Yes, Provost and Pitcher.
And they're the ones that determined that we needed the meters?
No, no, we needed the meters. We went out and got a contract. Provost hasn't performed, and so we want to meet our obligation. This will take care of our obligation to get the design and built.
Okay, I think maybe we're talking two different languages here. I'm seeing in the report that on May 17, 2023, that the company, the engineering company that we entered into an agreement with was supposed to provide a master plan update since we hadn't had one for quite some time. During that plan, was there any discussion or were we aware that we needed to have these meters?
Yes, there was, but that was separate. It was another contract.
So I think the confusion is that the master plan is its own separate project from the meter project. It's the same consultant that will, we will end up awarding because they are already working on the master plan, and it just creates more efficiency because there was inefficiencies with the previous contractor. But they're two separate projects. So we were aware of the meters and our work with the various irrigation districts, but that previous contractor was moving too slow, as Director Berksen said. And that's why we're proposing to move forward with Corolla.
Okay, so, but my report says that on May, May of '23, Corolla was the company that we entered into the contract with.
That was for the storm drain, master plan, the storm drain. Provost was the other firm doing it. They've not performed, they're extremely expensive. We decided, I've asked them to revise their price, Provost. They essentially didn't revise it. I got a more competitive price from this firm. So that's why we want to amend this contract and proceed.
All right. Well, and I understand that, but Provost was not mentioned in this report.
No, ma'am, what they were.
So, you know, that's, that's why it's confusing to me because it's only one company that's mentioned here. And I couldn't understand why they did not make this known to us at that time, since it's the same company. But now there's a secondary company, which you're indicating that's made this determination. And I didn't find them mentioned in this report.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
So I just, I just want to summarize this before I get confused. So we talked about doing something we were supposed to do 20 years ago. Never came to fruition. You recognized the deficiency, saw that we needed to meet our obligation. It's a completely separate project than the master plan versus the water meters. Tried to get it done, saw that we were going to be overcharged and working to get the needs met. So this item is to correct that and get it done at a cheaper rate.
Yes, sir.
And that's fine. It's just that there was no clarity in the report. And that's the point that I'm taking. Thank you.
I found my staff report pretty clear, but thank you. All right, so we want to do a separate vote for D and F, correct?
Well, now that it's cleared up, we can just go with the whole thing. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so do I have a motion on the consent agenda? Councilmember Jones?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Thank you. Councilmember Lambert?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Let's move on to item eight, public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action as described here in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. So item 8A is a public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of a conditional use permit 2024-5 and a categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15301, existing facilities to allow the use of a type 41 alcohol license for on sale of beer and wine for a bona fide eating place, La Gloria Restaurant and Desserts LLC, located at 265 Mercy Springs Road, Suite I and J, more specifically identified as accessory parcel number 025-121-012 and 013. For this, we'll go to Community Economic Director Suzanne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. This item before you is for a conditional use permit. The background, this item was brought before the Planning Commission on July 10, where they recommended approval after a public hearing of conditional use permit 2024-05. La Gloria Restaurant and Desserts has been in operation since 2021 and is looking to expand their business. They are now going to be occupying the suite next door, which is Suite I, which will allow them to expand for more seating area. And then they're also proposing to expand their services to also include the sale of beer and wine. This is the location of La Gloria Restaurant and Desserts located at 265 Mercy Springs Road, Suites I and J. This is located within the Premier Cinemas Shopping Center Plaza. So Premier Cinemas is located east of La Gloria. Miano Elementary is located west of the restaurant. And then there are also other various commercial uses that are just south within the same commercial plaza, some of which are body transformations and other ancillary uses. So ABC license, the proposal is for a type 41. The conditional use permit is needed for issuance of any ABC license, which in this case would be for the on sale of beer and wine for a bona fide public eating place. ABC licenses are regulated by the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, ABC. And the proposed hours and days of operation for La Gloria are essentially Monday through Sunday, and they are closed on Wednesdays, but they're primarily open from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The use permit analysis, the municipal code has various criteria for general all use permits and then has specific criteria for the sale of alcohol. The staff report provides all of the specifics on the findings. And I can go through those if you have questions. Otherwise, I will pass through that. But this does meet all of the findings required. And then the issuing authority is ABC. This project is located within Census Track 22.01. And there will not be an overuse or an overconcentration in this area, and there will be served with a bona fide eating place, so with a restaurant. This is the floor plan and security plan proposed. The cameras are highlighted in blue, and I apologize that they don't show, they are not shown very well on this diagram. But the existing restaurant, which is Suite J, that's the area that is on the right hand of the screen, which consists of the kitchen. There are three cameras there. And then the new suite, which is Suite I, will consist of two cameras to cover the entire floor area of the dining area. Here are photos. This is the exterior of the restaurant. This is the interior of the restaurant. This is their current suite that they're in. As you can see, they are confined in their space. And this expansion is great for the business and also great for the customers. Public comment, public hearing notice was published in the West Side Express and mailed to the property owners within a 300-foot radius on Wednesday, July 24. And as of today's date, no comments have been received. Staff is recommending that the city council would consider finding the proposed project to be categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to Article 19, Section 15301, and that it is an existing facility and approved conditional use permit number 2024-05 to allow the on sale of beer and wine through an ABC type 41 license for La Gloria Restaurants and Desserts located at 265 Mercy Springs Road, Suites I and J. And that concludes my presentation. The applicant, Melina Telis, is here as well to answer any questions.
All right, so we'll start with questions from council. Questions from council. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. Just one question. Is there going to be any cameras on the exterior of this building for any particular reason? I don't see anything.
We can ask the applicant to respond to that.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. Yes, we are planning on having cameras on the exterior. We have, we want to put one in the back end and then in the front. As you can see in the pictures, we have kind of like a little shade area, and that one would be very... We are probably considering to put two, since we have two suites facing the entrances. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? All right.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. Do you have any public comments, questions regarding this item? All right. I'll close the public hearing and look for a motion. Councilmember Jones?
Well, I'm a little biased here because they have delicious food and excellent desserts, so... But I'll still make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 6820 as submitted.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Begonia?
I'll second the motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. And before we move on to item 8B, I'm going to give a moment for our city attorney and councilmember Lambert to step out. And the reason they're stepping out is they do have a conflict, is they both have businesses that are in the downtown P-Bid area, so... Not because they want to. All right, let's move on to 8B, public hearing to receive public comment and consideration for the renewal of the Las Vanas Downtown Property and Business Improvement District. For this, we'll go to Community Economic Development Director Suzanne.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So tonight, we will have a presentation, and I would like to introduce Emily Brown from Civitas. This particular item is a continuation from the June 5 city council meeting where the city council adopted a resolution of intent. And that allowed this process to happen, to solicit the property owners of, within the current Property and Business Improvement District, whether they would support or not support a renewal of the P-Bid. And this renewal would be for 10 years. There is, and staff is obviously supportive and recommends approval of moving forward with this. And tonight, that would mean a resolution of formation to renew the P-Bid district for 10 years. There are many benefits that are produced out of the relationship with the P-Bid. And there are various accomplishments that the Las Vanas Downtown Association has had with the establishment of the P-Bid since 20... So it established in 2019, but did not commence until January 1, 2020. So between that time of January 1, 2020, and until its sun sets, which would be December 31, 2024, the accomplishments consist of activities and events downtown. They have a camera security system now downtown that is proactive. I receive the reports weekly and can see what type of activity and deterrent that that camera system provides. And then the partnership and cooperation communication with our local police department, which seems to be helping. police department, which seems to be helping the local property owners within the P-Bid District. There is weekly power washing of the sidewalks. There are, and I know I'm missing, I'm sure Maribel can talk about more, there's landscaping and maintenance of the landscaping. And then the operations of having a nonprofit 501(c)(3) Downtown Association. So with that, I will introduce Emily Brown from Civitas to provide us the presentation tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you. Stacy, you can go ahead and begin the slideshow. So my name's Emily Brown. I'm a project manager with Civitas, and we are a legal and consulting firm based in Sacramento that specializes in the formation and renewal of special assessment districts like this one. We have helped in the formation and renewal of over 300 districts nationwide, including the Los Manos Downtown Property Business Improvement District in 2019 when it was formed. So we are back tonight to discuss the renewal of this district for another 10 years, as Stacy mentioned. I'll just kind of briefly go over what is a P-Bid for anyone that's not familiar, and then I'll dive into the legal process for renewing the district. So what is a Property and Business Improvement District, also referred to as a P-Bid? Next slide. So P-Bids are stable funding sources for property owners within a commercial area to pool their money to fund improvements for the area, to attract customers, attract new businesses, and develop the area. Next slide, please. And the way a P-Bid works. So a property owner will pay an assessment on their property tax bills, which is then collected by the county twice a year. Those funds are forwarded to the city, and then the city forwards those assessment dollars to a nonprofit corporation that manages the P-Bid. In this case, it's the Los Manos Downtown Association. And then they can spend those funds in accordance with their management district plan, which was drafted by the property owners in 2019 when the district was formed. So again, the district was formed in 2020 for an initial term of five years, which is the maximum allowable term for a formation. For subsequent renewals, districts can be renewed up to 10 years. And so property owners would now like to renew the district for 10 years to continue to provide maintenance and security services and marketing and placemaking services. So all of those great events and banners and signs and lights and decorations to continue to provide that to the downtown area. So the renewal process began with a lot of outreach and consensus building with property owners. Since starting this process last September, there have been several, if monthly or if not bi-monthly, meetings with our steering committee made up of property owners that helped spearhead this renewal. There were community meetings held with property owners and several one-on-one property owner meetings to gain consensus on what the new district would look like. And from that outreach, we drafted the management district plan. So with renewal, we have to draft a new management district plan for what the new term will look like. It's essentially the constitution of the district, so it lays out the district boundaries, the services, the budget, how the assessment will be imposed, the term, and who's going to be managing that district. Based on conversations with property owners, there wasn't a lot of appetite for change, so most of it's staying pretty much the same. There's a modest assessment increase just to keep up with the cost of living. And then services are essentially the same. The boundaries haven't changed. Governance is still remaining the same. So not too many changes with that. And then the law says that we have to take that management district plan to the property owners, and we need signed petitions from owners that will pay over 50% of the assessment. And so that is a weighted vote. Essentially, if there are, if the total district budget were $100,000, we would need signed petitions from property owners that would pay over $50,000. So we did achieve that in May, so we received the necessary 50% to move forward. And from there, we came to counsel on June 5th for the adoption of the resolution of intention, which triggered the next phase, which is the balloting and hearing process, which brings us here tonight. So on the next slide, there's just a overview of the timeline. So March through May is when we collected petitions from the property owners, adopting that resolution of intention on June 5th. And then following that, all property owners were mailed their individual ballots and notices of tonight's public hearing. And tonight, we will be tallying the ballots. As long as we have more yes votes voted or weighted by how much they're paying in assessment, more yes votes than no votes, the statute says that we can move forward with adoption of the resolution of formation. Thank you, and I'll take any questions.
Questions from council. Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you. I'm not sure if you have this information, but there are property owners that probably have one vote, some may have two, or however many square feet they have. So based on their square footage, that determines how many votes they will have.
Essentially, the assessment is based on their lot's square footage or their parcel's square footage, and the vote is based on how much they're paying in assessment. So essentially, it's tied back to the size of the parcel.
So can you give me an example of that as far as square footage is concerned, based on, how many square feet do you, do you need to have in order to have one vote?
So the assessment rate is 31 cents per lot square foot.
Okay.
So.
And it would be percentage, right, Emily? So say I have 1,200 square feet, I have a 1,200 square foot lot, and maybe that comes out to 0.66% of the weight. So it wouldn't be, based on square footage, I get one vote. It's a percentage.
Okay. Yeah, it's a percentage of how much they're paying into the total assessment. So the total assessment budget is around $180,000. So from there, you can kind of gauge the percentage weights.
And are we, can someone tell me that everyone that's in the district participate in the voting process? Or were there some property owners that did not vote?
So all of the property owners received a ballot in the mail to their address on record with the county assessor, which is what the law stipulates.
Right. And so my question is, did all the property owners vote?
So the city clerk will be tabulating what was received. So whichever, however many ballots we received, she will be tabulating. So then we'll be able to determine if everyone voted or not.
So.
And who voted.
A property owner that may have a large amount of square footage has X amount of votes on that one ballot.
A percentage of.
Well, percentage wise, yes. Okay. Now, I heard you indicate that there was not, from the property owners, there wasn't much appetite for change. And you read the various things that were in your report, which is pretty much what's been going on over the past five years. So for the next 10 years, is, are they going to still just be doing the same thing?
So we try to keep the management district plan broad, so that the Board of Directors has freedom throughout the term to utilize the funds as they see necessary within the parameters of the plan. So we set broad parameters in the plan, and then the property owners themselves get to decide, as the Board of Directors, how those funds are spent. So the plan was already fairly broad to begin with in the formation, so we kept things the same to allow flexibility. And that's what the property owners voted on for through the petition process.
So, so my, my concern is, over the next 10-year process, of what the property owners are going to be doing to enhance the downtown. And, and some of my concern was, you know, some buildings that were pretty outdated, that still look the same as they have been for quite some time, and whether or not the association is going to be working with those property owners to perhaps doing some elevation updates to their property. And also, in reading this proposal, one of the things that, that was indicated is, let's see, where was that? Should have put a sticker on it. Oh, here it is. Okay. Is, the aim is to showcase the downtown as a distinction and to have it a place of destination and provide economic opportunities for businesses. That's a broad statement. But I guess in my thought, the economic opportunities is the businesses that are already there, you know, how are they going to work with them, maybe to enhance or better their business so that they can draw more clients into their, into their business area. That, that was kind of the proposal when this whole thing was presented to us before the city even voted on it, is to help build the downtown up, help build the businesses up, so that it's more profitable for them to be there and to get more people into the downtown area. I would hope that they would work on assessments with the building owners, perhaps to do some sort of survey to find out what people want in Los Manos, rather than just having people decide, oh, I want to open this business, and it's not a business that is going to be viable to our downtown. So those are the kinds of things that, that I didn't see stated in here, and maybe that's something they're working on within their organization, but it's something that I, I would like to hear, as to whether that's going to be part of their proposal in building up our downtown. And, and I've made references to Mrs. Sousa about a city that I came from here, and it was just like Los Manos when I left it. And now it's extraordinary, and we're still looking the same way. We haven't done anything to make our downtown look, look better. So that, that would be my concern about this program.
Well, thank you for your feedback. And those are definitely within the parameters of the district plan. And I would like to emphasize, too, that annual reports are required to be submitted to City Council. So you will receive regular updates on the programs and the accomplishments of the P-Bids, of the P-Bid at least once a year. And I, my involvement is really just in the legal.
Yes.
Side of the process. But if there, I don't know if Stacy or Maribel would like to speak to any of those other comments on the proposed plans for the district moving forward.
Well, I mean, if Maribel can speak to it, she's the CEO of the organization. It would be nice to hear from her.
I, I will just chime in real quick. As far as, the city council doesn't have any authority to tell a business how to run a business. That is the business owner's job. So how the P-Bid puts it together, and I appreciate the, I'm going to call them bylaws, but I appreciate the, the management plan that's put together. I think it's supposed to be generalized for a reason, because every business is going to be different. There's nothing that this council can put together to say, tell me how you're going to make your business more money. That's what business owners struggle with every single day. That's their job. So I think it's not something that our council has any, A, authority to even question. And two, the purpose of tonight is to either approve this based on the general plan and do the, and do the vote. So, but if, if Maribel or any representatives from the downtown want to come up, then happy to have you up here. It's up to you. Yeah, absolutely. And if you want to answer Councilmember Lewis's question.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. My name's David Sousa. I am a board member of the Downtown Association. I've been a member for three and a half years now. I've been a past president. And I am a property owner downtown also with a new business that we recently opened up about 30 days ago. And one thing I want to say and answer to your question, Debra, is, and you heard what Civitas was saying, the annual budget's around $180,000. And I'm not making light of that, but at the end of the day, what that money is purposed for, one, the downtown acts as a liaison between ownership, the city, new businesses coming in. It's kind of helped streamline, I know it was for me, that's what attracted me to begin with, was that it gave me a, an open channel, a line of communications, if you may, with not only the city, but city leaders and what have you, to better plan and help expedite things. I know we went through a lot of challenges during COVID and what have you. But at the end of the day, I've seen in four years a huge improvement in the downtown. It's going to take time. These down, I'm, I'm personally involved, I read the numbers today, in about 18 different downtowns in three different states. And I can honestly say, every time a downtown association was formed, we took an average of 10 to 12 years to really see the development side of it and the transition. But the progress is there. It's helped a lot of owners, not only people that, let's say, if they're not for it, but what it does help, it helps improve their values. If someone's wanting to, to sell and is wanting to get out of business, it helps them with that, that exit strategy also makes them more appealing for their new buyer to come in, spend a little bit more money to acquire those buildings. But at the end of the day, it's, it's about, you know, being a liaison to the city. That's, it's a limited budget. As far as infrastructure is concerned, we've done several infrastructure projects. We've partnered with the city on, on several things, which has been great. But there's just not that big of a budget to go in and personally develop every property in here. Again, it's more of a liaison, like I said, to help guide people in the right direction. While, when it boils down to, as an independent business owner, it's up to them to spend their own money and their own resources on developing and improving their own, their own properties and their businesses as they see fit. But the biggest agitation I've seen in other cities that I've been involved with, that were forming the downtown association such as this, was just not having the, the connections or the resources to know who to go to, or whom I should say, to, to really help expedite their process. Because it can be overwhelming when you're new into a, into a town like Los Manos, and you don't know many people, where to go, where to churn. And a lot of times, it's not about the, the money or the liquidity that someone has. It's about having those connections and really, you know, getting that business off the ground in a timely manner. So that's, in a nutshell, what the downtown is there for. As far as going in and spending millions of dollars to help improve it, the budget's just not there at all.
And I appreciate you with that clarity. And, and I kind of heard a little bit of statement in there about working with the property owners about future enhancement to their property.
Correct.
And, and that's the kind of thing that I was just trying to get into my ear, to hear what your organization's plan is to help those business owners get to that point where they have better merchants downtown, or more merchants downtown, I won't, I should say, instead of better, that are bringing products to our community that people want. What is the plan to work with property owners to help them to enhance their building? I'm not saying that that's your responsibility. Just want to hear what the plan is of how you're going to accomplish these things over the next 10 years. And I know it's going to take more than 10 years to get this done. But, you know, how, how is that going to process, how that process is going to happen? I'm not here to try to tell a bill, a, a property owner what to do with their property, but it's all about enhancing downtown and making a destination place. And so I just want to hear how, how you guys plan to do that. And that's what I haven't been able to hear. Now, if you've had meetings with the community, for them to come out to see what some of your plans are, that's good. I happen to be a person that doesn't have Facebook, so I, I wouldn't be able to see that online. So maybe there are some other avenues to get that information out to the community, so everybody can hear.
Well, we do have our, sorry, our monthly meetings that are open to the public for a forum to come in and speak and listen and, and be enthralled in what's going on.
Right.
And one thing I found is that And one thing I've found is that we, in Los Banos itself, we don't get a lot of that participation. And it is an open door policy, and we do have those timeframes. We publicly advertise that. We're very vocal about it. But at the end of the day, there's not, I haven't seen really that many involvement come. So it's, you know, you have to be proactive also. You know, it's just, it's one of those things. But we have, in the last, I'd say, probably realistically, 24 months of that budget, we've most definitely have cut a lot of the pork and kind of redefined where the monies need to go that are more proactive, you know, a lot less in staffing and whatever, and more back into the downtown. We try to help, again, with the limited budget as we can and partner with the city on multiple fronts, but there's only so much we can do. It is extremely limited, you know, for the size and everything. But I'm not one to throw away money myself, Debra, as a businessman, but I see the value in it. It's just, it does take time. And I've seen already in the last four years, multiple businesses that have come in have improved, have really cleaned things up. I can see it, a big transformation. We have an archway sign coming in. I know it's not the downtown, it's via the city, but we were a part of that in negotiating a lot of things and really being instrumental about pushing that forward. So those are all things that will attract people. It is going to take time. But again, it is a limited budget, but we're trying to use it as efficiently as we can. And I think the only way to really do that is not put it all into infrastructure projects, because you won't see much of a benefit. That's a drop in the bucket at the end of the day. But again, being in liaisons to the community and the city leaders and help streamline the business owners on putting them on the right path, basically. What to do, what our counts are as far as population, car counts, whatever. We have all that information. We're always happy to share with. And we do take into consideration as far as what type of business we're going downtown. Because you're right, it makes a big difference. If it's going to be a destination place, you have to be critical of what people are really wanting to do down there.
So, thank you for your time.
That's what I'd say. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, so at this time, I'll open the public hearing. So if there's anyone wanting to come forward to speak on this item.
I'm a property owner, and I'm against it. I consider it an entertainment tax, not an improvement tax, because most of the money has been done for events and promotions and not bringing any money to the downtown merchants. There have been two events that have actually brought some money down to the local merchants. And I just don't think that that's what our money's intended for. It was sold as improvements. The money should be there as a loan program or something so they can fix the facades, so they can actually change the look of downtown. If you want to entertain people, that's fine. The Fourth of July is fine, but we shouldn't pay for it. And all the functions that you have at the city plaza are fine, but they bring people downtown after hours, and the local businesses get nothing out of it. And what do you got but outside vendors mostly? I have not been happy with it, and he says that delay is on with the city. Well, of course it is. You've got a full-time city employee, Stacy, that is running every meeting and every board participation there. So why wouldn't it be? And why isn't the Chamber of Commerce promoting the city? And I object to the dollars having all the vote. What good is that? The rich men get everything, the little guy gets nothing. I don't think that's fair. And the board, the board is self-promoting. The only way you can get on the board is if a board member appoints you, and then they vote for you. Is that fair? Is that representation for everybody? No. It's taking care of those that have the dollars. I just don't think that's the right way to spend our dollars. And the other thing is, you asked the question about the participation in the voting. The city itself has over 16% of the vote. And there's a few property owners, at least five, that have more than 34% of the vote, which means they've already got 50% before we even cast a ballot. Is that fair? Just asking.
Thank you.
You talked about video cameras, and I fell in front of the old cinema in November. There was nobody that came and rescued me. And I was going to Elaine Corey's dinner that she has annually at Thanksgiving. I fell Friday, and I have bruise on my leg, and it's very swollen. And three city workers were there when it happened. A gentleman with packages of UPS, I think, picked me up off the ground. Not one person from the cameras did nothing. Okay, so I'm trying to bring back similar of Circle Love to the downtown area. It was my mom's project of sewing and arts and crafts, and I did the arts and crafts, she did the sewing, to Melon Lux. And Joe said that if I put a proposal, he'll let me do it. And what I want to do is, we have homeschool kids that need projects, and also elderly too. So I'm doing three different times. I'm going to do from 10 to 11 homeschool, from one to, two, one to three elderly. Because I don't know about you guys, I don't wake up so good at this age. And from three to five, it will be after-school program. The last thing I'm trying to do, and it's going to be called Modern Mother Hubbard, it kind of stuck, because the homeless stuck me with that name, arts and crafts. It's not going to be Circle Love no more. My mom is really sick.
We want to stay on topic to the public hearing.
So the last thing you talked about is about a new business in Los Banos Drugstore. I would like to put a business back where the food program is back in there.
We need to discuss either your opinion on the voting matter of the P bid. That's what we're here to discuss.
Well, I think you guys, that the downtown area should not be paying for the fireworks either. I think the whole town is the ones that are seeing it. And the whole town, Walmart, all of them should be helping pay for all of the fireworks. I don't think that it should be downtown. Downtown's small. It should be the whole town.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
I'm not terribly good at this, but we'll give it a go. Hi, my name's Taylor Wolfson, and I've come out in favor of the Los Banos Property Business Improvement District. Roughly four to four and a half years ago, Los Banos property owners voted to approve the Los Banos Property Business Improvement District. And with the blessing of the city council that had the foresight to see that it could be a benefit for downtown, it was given overall approval. Since that time, the P bid and the Downtown Association have made huge strides, as well as dealt with some significant setbacks. On the positive, and things that are apparent in the public eye, there have been new and improved events, including the downtown lighting ceremony for Christmas. It improved in larger Fourth of July event, and the ever-popular Farm to Table. New events included the Casino Night and Farmer's Market, the St. Patrick's Day event, and newer still, that has just been announced and planned, is the Mariachi Festival. Many of those events are partnerships with the city, allowing all groups to pool on their strengths and avoid their weaknesses, making events more reasonable, stronger, and better for the community of Los Banos. Other partnerships with the city include the recently completed tree trimming project and the archway sign that will be going in at the end of Sixth Street, closest to the highway. I believe the P bid and those partnerships have offered all downtown merchants and property owners who have chosen to take advantage of them a more direct line of communication with the city and city officials. Other goals completed by the P bid include improved sound for downtown, cleaning of sidewalks and graffiti, new trash cans, planters, and a new security camera system that takes a more proactive role in crime prevention. All of these successes have also come with turbulent times. The original Board of Directors of the Downtown Association was left with egg on its face when Greg Hostetler reneged on his agreement to provide $1 million in matching funds for downtown building beautification. It looked like it was going to be a successful program, but after the first payment and pictures with city council, that money dried up and the pledge vanished. Then, just like the rest of the world, for two years, we were hit with COVID. Excuse me. Getting wound up for the next part here. While funds are received from the P bid, we also receive funds from sponsorships and those events that I mentioned above. Obviously, events were not going on during COVID. Sorry. Then sadly, we lost Sharon Silva, the executive director for the P bid and my friend. Regardless of these setbacks, we in the downtown have pressed on with our successes and wish to continue to do so. We would like to expand the camera system so it covers more of downtown, offering a further blanket of safety for the community. One of the original plans of the P bid was doing marketing outside of Los Banos to bring people to Los Banos. That's a box I would still like to put a successful checkmark next to. These two goals are two that I would like to see. There's room for more. I've heard a lot of people tonight talk about their dissatisfaction or why they don't like the P bid. I would ask, have you been to a meeting? Have you made a suggestion as to what you would like to see in a reasonable fashion? Do you have an idea? We would like to hear it. I, more than most, and am affected by the cost of the P bid. Some would argue that while supporting this right now, while I have more vacancies than some people have buildings in downtown, I would be crazy. I would argue the opposite. I, like many of you, have roots in this downtown. And for more than 20, 30, or 40 years, I too have seen what's been happening to downtown. In most cases, not a lot. There have been pockets and sparks of excitement, but no long-term plan. Would a recent property owner have invested three to four million in downtown Los Banos without the P bid? I would argue he would not. Would three or four other restaurants be coming in? I argue they would not. I have taken the tact that things can be darkest before the dawn. We have already seen a little bit of the dawn with some of these new businesses coming in. I urge the city to pass the P bid for the next 10 years so that we can see what the dawn looks like in downtown Los Banos.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public forum. And Stacy, what is the process for the ballots?
Sorry, thank you, Taylor, for recognizing Sharon Silva, who established the district. And a lot of her hard work and vision was put into this because she believed in Los Banos. She believed in the opportunities in our downtown and what our downtown could look like in 10, 12, 15, 20 years from now. And set those roots to help us on the right path. So our next steps are for the city clerk to tabulate the ballots. We'd like to have a five-minute recess to be able to do that and then be able to announce the tabulations back to the city council.
All right, so let's take a recess until 7:45.
Three. The next ballot is from Sora Strasian, trustee. No, he votes no, for three votes. Or does it? Okay, just no. So, no. On purpose? The next ballot's from Lopez Carmen A., votes yes. Olivera David Costa and Ami Elin, they vote no. Delatorre Eric, they vote yes. Hurley Chase and Dana trustee, they vote no. Hurley Chase and Dana trustee, they vote no. Bad Boys for Life LLC, they vote yes. Hernandez Melissio Alvarado, they vote yes. Wolfson Properties LLC, do I need to state all four? Subaga Fred M. and Mary H., trustee, no. Vote or VOT, V-O-G-T, vote, vote Carson R., no. City of Los Banas. Is it one or two? Okay, so one ballot votes yes. Hussein Zayed and Hussein Tariq, they vote yes. DeCosta Thomas, no. Is that okay? Did they mark it out? Ekins Robert H. and Daniel Harrison, yes. Vera Eugene James and Carolyn Dell True, or does that be trustees? Vera Frank L. and Maria L., trustee, no. Mountain Brown Hall Association of the IOOF, they vote no. Wolfson Lawrence J. and Diane M., trustees, yes. Jermaine O. John O., trustee, they didn't mark a box. I don't see a box marked. Brooks Mary F. Valalta and Daniel A., trust, they vote no. Sing Hardial and Sarnjit K., trustee, no. Lodge Mountain Brown, number 82 IOOF Hall AS, no. Vera Eugene James and Carolyn Dell trustees, no. Okay, I have no more ballots, so that's... Yeses have 55.75% of the votes. And if anybody wants to look at it, they can look at it. Okay, that completes the tabulation. We'll be reconvening.
Mr. Mayor, do you want me to read that into the record officially, or do you think what I just said is good enough?
No, please do.
Okay. The results of the ballot tabulation were the yes votes were 55.75%, and the nos were 44.25%.
Thank you. And then, as a request, do we have the tabulation of just the simply popular vote, the number of votes tabulated and the yes and no?
Ms. Suzette Elms is going to email that to me so that I won't have it in the public record, so if anybody wanted to see it, they can reach out to the city clerk's office, and we'll gladly share it.
Do you have a number now?
Yes, so total number of ballots received were 44 ballots in total.
Yeah, and if you have a comparison of yes versus no?
Sure, yeses are 18 and nos are 26.
All right, thank you. All right, and then I understand for staff, the next step in the process is for the council to vote on it?
Yep, so staff is asking that the city council would consider adopting the resolution of formation to renew the district.
All right, do I have a motion from council? Councilmember Begonia? 8B, yeah.
8B, okay. I'd like to make a motion to adopt city resolution number 6821. I submitted.
And Councilmember Jones?
I'll second that.
All right, and if I could have a roll call though, please.
Lambert, Begonia, Jones, Lewis, Giannis.
Yes. All right, motion passes. So is there a Councilmember Lambert and our city attorney joining us? I just, again, want to thank everybody for taking the time, effort to do the process and do it right. And so, everybody, again, thank you for that, and I'm looking forward to seeing what the next 10 years of downtown's going to look like, so thank you. All right, I think we're all back. Let's move on to item nine, cancellation of the regular city council meetings scheduled for Wednesday, September 4th, 2024, due to summer break. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Jones?
So moved.
Councilmember Lambert?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you. Sorry, Doug, little late. All right, item 10, advisement of public notices, and we have one report.
One second, Mr. Mayor, while I get myself pulled together. Here we go. So, one item, it's a site plan review, and this is for the Los Banas Animal Shelter located at 1010 Airport Road. And this would be for the demolition of the existing modular building, and the site plan review for the addition of the new modular building will be coming forward to the planning commission. And this item will be held on Wednesday, August 14th, at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Move on to item 12, report update. Versus County Association of Governments, MCG, Peninsula Clean Energy, Measure V Committee, and the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, and Los Banas Property... Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped you. Pulled my paper over. Number 11, sorry, city manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to let everybody know we're installing some solar panels at the community center. You see that parking lot off to the side of the community center? We're doing some work there, going to have some solar panel covering, so we're really excited about that. It's been a project long in the making, partnership with Peninsula Clean Energy on that project, so a big thank you to them for their involvement with that, so it's going to be another nice update to the community center. So far to the community center, within this last year alone, I think we painted the community center, we got that parking lot paved, a new parking lot added, got some new lights added there, got some cameras added, fence coming along, so a lot of work has been done within the last year at this community center, so we are extremely excited about that. Really quite historic, some work there, so if you get a chance, when you drive by there, you'll be able to see the work that's going on there. Continuing doing some striping, and we'll be doing some paving here soon throughout the city, so we're really excited about that. We did a lot of paving work last year, and we've got quite a bit more planned for this year, so I really just want to give a big thank you to all the staff for their hard work. Doesn't go unnoticed, and we really appreciate it. And the last one is, if you were out there... The last one is, if you were out there last night, or if you weren't, I can give you the update. We had our national night out event and it was absolutely phenomenal. It was a lot of fun, it was a good event. And there was thank you to all the vendors and all the partners, to everybody that showed up. I have to give, in my opinion, the coolest prize to the fire department. They had this little squirt gun in the form of a fire extinguisher, and I think Dana is responsible for coming up with that toy. So she did a good job. I saw them floating around and everybody was getting squirted with one of those all around. So it's a pretty neat little gadget that was created there. So a great event. Thank you to Chief Ray Reyna for his hard work putting that together. Also Sergeant Ivan Mendez really led a lot of that work and the collaboration of the different partners and vendors out there. It was just a wonderful event. And the conversations that I've had with different folks, they've commented that they think it was probably maybe the biggest national night out that we may have had in the recent years. So just thank you to the community for coming on out and support, public works team, parks team, everybody that was there to be able to put that event together. Just, it's too many people to list by name, but I just want to say thank you to that. And I know we all really enjoy giving back to the community and putting on such events. And thank you to the community for your involvement. Those events don't happen without you folks being there and joining on the fun with us. So we thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, now we'll really move on to item twelve. Report update. Merced County Association of Governments, Peninsula Clean Energy, Measure V Committee, San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution, and the downtown. And we'll start with Councilmember Lewis on the Valley Air Pollution.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a board report tonight. Our meeting is coming up the third Thursday of this month, but I do would like to remind everybody that our air quality in Los Banos in our area has been unhealthy for the last five or six days for people who have respiratory illnesses and are sensitive. So just make sure that you try to stay out from the outdoor as much as possible while the air quality is poor. Today it was a hundred and twenty-four, which that's a very high level for air quality index. So for those who have sensitivity and who have asthma and other respiratory ailments, please try to stay indoors as much as possible and turn on your air filters if you have them. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything on the downtown association?
Nothing to add to it.
All right. All right, MCG, one thing that I do want to bring up, and it's very consistent in every meeting, is we have discussions, open discussions with Caltrans. And so any issues that we have with Caltrans and state highways that run through our city, I'm able to bring those forward in the MCG meeting. I was very happy to report that something that was brought to me, and I've brought it up a few times, is the meeting in there at Badger Flat and one fifty-two. If you go to, you know, if you're heading west out of town and you try to make that right to go north by that AMPM, sometimes your car would like drop about four feet. And so I was very happy to get them in the last meeting and have a discussion, say what can we do to remedy it, and it has since been graded. And so the potholes have been filled in and it's been graded. So I was very, very happy for Caltrans of that. One thing with Measure V and the number of projects that are moving forward, I just want to remind the public, and I've just, I've seen it on social media, we help as leadership vote on policies and procedures for the city of Los Banos, not the state of California. And so, you know, we can make recommendations and we can have discussions. And at the end of the day, what the state decides to do on state highways is going to be made at a state level, not in this council chambers. And so I just want to kind of remind everybody of that because I'm seeing things on social media that are inaccurate about that. So can we voice our opinions? Can we make recommendations? Absolutely. But at the end of the day, the state is going to do what the state wants to do on those highways. So I think that's all I have for MCG and Measure V, and we do have a meeting coming up on the fifteenth, so I'll have more information. So let's move on to item thirteen, city council reports. Start with Councilmember Begonia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to talk about some of the work that's being done in my district, obviously, and some by Pacheco High School. There's been some striping down on the roads and Snow Goose as well. There's a new stop sign at the intersection of Snow Goose and Fallbrook, just in time for the start of school. And so it's a matter of safety for our students and just kids walking in the area in general. In the College Greens area, we're in Shawnee Village Park. We want the park built for you, for the kids and the parents who want their kids out playing at the park. You've seen a fence go up and we want to get that park go up for you as soon as we can. We're working on it. For the rail trail and people on Pitzer Way, specifically Mr. Avalar, who's comes often and he's the mouthpiece for that group, we are always working on that. And we are trying to relocate them soon. Yeah, soon we're working on that. Getting the house there relocated to another area in town. And, oh, National Night Out was fantastic to see all the people out there, getting the chance to connect and with our amazing law enforcement that we have here in this city. And I got to come about seven forty-five from football practice and to see how many people were there was pretty awesome. So amazing turnout by our citizens, amazing show for, from our law enforcement, from our, all our city staff that put that together. It's wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Go to Councilmember Jones.
Regarding the P. bid, I've always been a supporter of the downtown in general and just think, you know, good looking downtown is just a cool thing to have in your city. And, you know, I was a little concerned to see which way the vote was going to go, but to my pleasant surprise, it passed. And I'm really excited to see what ten years looks like for downtown from now. And so I'll be continuing to support it and property orders, and hopefully we can get some cool things going on downtown. National Night Out, probably the best event that to date for National Night Out. It was pretty impressive, and it just seems like the events that are going on in the city are just getting bigger and better every year. So good job to all the staff that worked hard on that. That is all.
All right, thank you. Go to Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you. And I'd also like to acknowledge the chief and his staff for outstanding National Night Out. It was very good. And all of our city staff that had tables out there and outside vendors that participated. We had County of Merced, we had even Merced Police Department out there. So it was really good, but the coup de grace was that you really had some cool gifts that you gave away. And I'm sure that the residents hung around for a long time who had raffle tickets to make sure that they were going to get one of those good gifts that were donated to the city. So job well done. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to congratulate them on the job well done last night. I've actually seen a lot of new vendors, including the Merced County Search and Rescue Boat that was out there. It was nice to see the drones flying around, you know, showcasing what they can do. The county had their little robot. It was really nice. A lot of new folks, a lot of, a lot of people at this one. So good job, Chief, Sergeant Mendez, and all the department heads that put it on.
All right, I guess I'm going to go last. So I want to start with some public comments, starting first with kind of the homeless strategic plan and what's going on and what's moving on. I can't speak for Fresno or any other city of how they're doing things or the method to do it. I will tell you that the governor's executive order that came out did not, in my opinion, differ with any of the strategies or plans we already had in place. It does, however, give us some teeth. It does give us, you know, for the individuals who choose to be homeless and choose to commit crimes on the streets, I think it does give us consequences, but I agree that it's not appropriate, in my opinion, to make homeless be criminalized. That's not, I don't think that's the intent of it. So we're still moving with everything that we're trying to do. One announcement I would like to make is we did, you know, we are working to receive the eleven point eight million dollar ERF grant, but the city was now just awarded two point five million dollars from Alliance Health for further homeless resources and assistance. And so that brings our grant total to fourteen point three million dollars in just the last, I think, ten, nine, ten months. And so we're super excited about that. We are, you know, putting everything in a line to get things done. And I understand it's a slow process and things can't happen overnight. But to provide resources and options to the homeless is priority number one. And then to move forward from there is obviously building the community, the tiny homes community, and providing more resources. Now, to offer those resources and get those people what they need and the help they need, again, we can lead a horse to water. And so I think, you know, the governor's executive order will then help us support updating and changing the municipal code once we have those resources in place. So we need to get those resources. And in the meantime, yes, the plan is to offer resources and help in a safe space near our police department, because we know that's going to be the area that's probably going to be least crime affected wise. And so that's the plan as it is right now. As far as the gentleman that came up and spoke about business promotions, as far as what we're posting on social media, I do think that, you know, and it's a great problem to have, right? We now have a social media presence, we have videos content being created, and so I would love to see and discuss, you know, possibly a policy on how do we do that fairly? How does every business get that opportunity to do that? I think that's a, that's a good thing, that businesses want to come forward and participate in that. So I would definitely love to have a further discussion with, if any, business owner about what kind of fair policy we can come up with to do that. Trees on the rail trail, and again, you know, the damage is the damage. And, you know, once, once we do get that place vacated, then we're going to do everything we can to get it back to the way it was and give it back to the community. But that's just something that, you know, we'll do the assessment once we can take that over. There was a comment made about, and the quote was "a members-only club meeting on the homeless." I never attended a members-only meeting on the homeless. I have held a homeless town hall workshop that I had over a hundred people attend at the community center, and that was kind of the starting point for us to, for me to, anyway, put the pen to paper and start to discuss with city staff, you know, what we can do. So I'm not aware of a members-only club on the, meeting on the homeless. The walking path to the college, I will tell you that, yes, I voted no on that. I think it's dangerous. I, my, my daughter just started college. The last place I'd want my daughter to walk is on Highway one fifty-two from Badger Flat to the Merced College Campus. I will encourage the college students, and I know classes are about to start, is please take advantage of the bus program through, through MCG, because right now, bus fares for students, it's free. So, yes, yeah, as a registered student, the rides are free. So I would much rather you, you get picked up somewhere and get taken to school. So, Mr. Hostel, I do want to thank him, and I appreciate him coming in and apologizing for misspeaking at the last council meeting about him. Again, that was, that was big of him to do that. As regards to Public Records Request Act, I will tell you that we have one city attorney. And so when requests are made for thousands of emails or text messages or whatever it is that you're asking for, I'll tell you, I'll log on my computer, you can go to town, you can, you can do whatever you want and read whatever you want. But collecting that data does not happen overnight. It can't happen overnight. The, the number of emails, and I'll tell you the discussions that I personally have with our city manager, I'll just tell you, I pick up the phone and call him. He is the city manager. I'm the mayor. I'm not the city manager. I don't run operations. I sit up here and we create policies. So if I have a question, I'm going to pick up the phone and call him. So yeah, I probably is maybe a dozen or so emails, I don't know, about things that the community relays to me and I relay. So I don't want to speak for any other members of the council, but that's how I communicate. So, but again, those things take time. So when we're working on large projects like the homeless, or we're working on things like community projects, and so when our city attorney has to stop what they're doing and now answer a two-hundred-and-sixty-six-page public record request, that is, you know, it's the price of doing business that is going to stop us. And we're going to have to put things on pause. And so I just want, you know, the community to understand that. The, Blanche came up and talked about the animals. I'm so proud of everything that we're doing with the animal shelter and the progress that we're making forward. The temporary building was just brought into the, to the animal shelter property. The microchipping events and the staff and the things that we're seeing, we're starting to see that progress. And so thank you to staff for doing all that. Gas prices, this was a comment made, and I tried to do as much homework on this. Actually, when I first came into office, I have a relative who actually delivers gas. And so, and I asked that very question, why is the Los Banos corridor feel so expensive? And what I found is that it's the profit and loss based on the amount of gas sold dictates, for some of the businesses, the price of gas. So if, for instance, the answer that was given to me, if I own a gas station in I-5 in Sananella, the number of cars and the number of gallons, I'm going to make a profit and loss of whatever it is, a micro amount. But I did ask that question, so thank you for bringing that forward. Other than that, I do want to say that we are having a blood, a blood drive at the community center tomorrow, correct? Yes. So even if you're not a fan of needles, go out and save a life. I donate blood pretty often. One cool thing about blood drives, not a lot of people realize, that if you register for it, they will actually send you an email of where your blood went. And so I did a donation two months ago and it went to a patient in Riverside Hospital. So it's kind of cool to, to hear that stuff back. So, and then Joe, last but not least, I want to thank you for putting out the new recreation guide. There's so many things going on that people can take advantage of and, you know, parks and progress and things like that. So, so thank you for putting that out. I think I'm done. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Councilmember Lambert?
Mayor, I'll make the motion.
You have a second? Councilmember Begonia?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll adjourn at eight-twenty. Thank you, everyone.